Let's call this meeting to order, please. Okay, we're just gonna wait a minute for Anne Marie to come up here. We can do roll call. Okay, how about if we stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance, folks? Jeffrey Dimick.
Present.
Kyle Gangler. Emily Gaiman.
Here.
Nicole King.
Here.
Bill William Lysat.
Here.
Stephen Maud.
Present.
Mary Jo Reiner.
Here.
Priya Serene.
Here.
Christopher Waya.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome Dr. Karen Trinkle, our new Assistant Superintendent, who is here to give us a presentation on breaking barriers.
Our point of making this presentation is a follow-up to last time. We want to keep in focus the great work that we're doing in this. And I want to thank Dr. Trinkle for newfound leadership in this and the support of the administration who are working on this. So, Dr. Trinkle, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. This is an update from a previous presentation. It's actually written about it, and in order to provide a review of where we are. And where we're headed. It's going to focus on two major areas. Focus on partnerships, those secondary partnerships, with adult and technical education, of successful programming for our students to learn how reading and writing. We will continue to emphasize and amplify the success and couple that with support and action. First, I wanted to take a brief moment and highlight some of the opportunities that currently exist at our high school for spiritual learning and partnerships between the other high schools. We have the university has built into campus and access to STEM and science research class. This partnership focuses on material sciences, research-based exposure, lab work in STEM, and learning in STEM fields. Help organizations like the United Valley Health Network, or St. Louis, but also bring their doors and provide more schools with exposure to the natural world. Guest speakers include orthopedic surgery and physical therapy. Other real-life applications include bigger thing, architecture, the chances to be IT studio class, site visits, and companies that focus on engineering, coordination, and inclusion training, and even more partnerships with the unions and human rights. Where we are. Currently, it takes our opportunities for student enrollment and operational assistance on the active school. Current enrollment proceeds tall. You can see that there are over 100 potential courses, and 85 of our students are enrolled in those 100 potential courses. Current enrollment for K. There are 31 potential courses available, and we have 31 students enrolled in each course. Our goal is to establish a system that will work for students here as well. Each program began with intention to include a wide range of students who are qualified for all the courses. This design realizes conflict in full schedule and lots of instructional time, and increases our students' opportunity to receive college credit as a significant increase rate. This allows our students to rapidly develop to be able to earn a associate degree all while earning transferable credits and achieving the bachelor's. Our goal is to target increasing the number of our students to capitalize on this opportunity in order for our students to be themselves as college-ready and college-capable, strengthen aspirations and confidence in academic success. Where we're headed. PA Career Link is a viable one-four-year counselor, and at the age when we began engineering careers in our high school every Tuesday, focusing on individual career services and catering skills, career opportunities, friendships, internships, post-graduation career pathways, and then new work experiences. These are free services offered to our students. The workforce investment program is a kiosk that provides direct access to research jobs directly from our schools, linking our students to jobs, employers, and careers. This offers a wide range of resources and transitions for physical employment or post-secondary education. This can and will provide our students with the opportunity to search for a meaningful career. Continuing operational to take places tomorrow will be with the manufacturing resource center to build our partnership for industry-based training and certifications. There will also be continued go-guests with the university presidents to strengthen our partnerships and enrollment. Again, to provide our students with college-level coursework and learn the expectations that come with the college-level coursework. We will continue to provide regular updates on this study of our X has its own goals. I will transition to our focus on leadership and literacy and our strategic focus, K is B. All children can learn and thrive in order to open all our supports to learning a handily for self-directed learners that have the high expectations. Whether students are learning to read or reading to learn, integrated literacy and lesson learning resources are valuable for in-depth instructional time. And that's directly aligned to efficiency and reading and writing. Using a cell phone to assess, teach, repeat, categories and outcomes to the mention of intervention. Having background knowledge helps our learners to be rigorous, well-versed in complex work. The more you know, the easier it is to comprehend informational text or content across all disciplines. In order to transform that new learning into deeper understanding and enhance future learning, that is learning that sticks and is not easily forgotten, we need to provide our students with the opportunity to reflect and actively learning, applying tasks, using this to solve problems and practice those skills. Where we are. Within core programming, we're building acquisition and transfer knowledge at middle grade level, helping with the student focus and comprehensive learning. To support explicit instruction and integrated awareness, Keddy was implemented as a supplemental core resource. That was dubbed out two years ago, and it is K1. That was meant to support our curriculum, our core curriculum. Provides at least five weeks of daily 10-12-minute lessons that focus on integrated awareness, letter and sound recognition, and language awareness. Additionally, by the end of this school year, get teachers' information and letters. And that provides our teachers with the opportunity to learn and help others on how to break awareness to read. Core instruction needs to meet about 80% of our learners, but it does not meet all of our learners where they are. That leads our focus on the multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, which has three levels, four tiers, instruction and support. All aimed at giving teachers a streamlined way of providing the best instruction to our students. Tier one provides instruction and support to all children. Tier two provides targeted, global interventions to keep them placed within our classroom and in the floor. Tier three, where children need enhanced support academically. This intervention looks like a one-on-one, personal whole-education. And there is a higher level of intervention in addition to the core instruction, which provides monitoring to make sure our students are achieving and the intervention is effective. This model allows us to give students the services they need as efficiently as possible. It begins with guidelines, work, or fit, and learning challenges and solutions. The idea is to get every student, each and every student, those who are found needs, those who are exceptionally gifted, and all of those who each do what they need to be successful. Where we're headed. Now, I want to take a look at a systematic approach to this structure. We're in the process of reviewing programs, and our team of educators and vendors, maybe it was two weeks ago, have received materials and presentations on our programs. Once a systematic approach is introduced, it's based on the group's orders, supporting vocabulary development, fluency, comprehension, as well as writing. This process will include evaluation of all of the resources for that program. There will be a focus on evolving each place in the instructional model, and we're able to substantiate collaboratively the need for continuing training and professional development in order to refine our comprehensive instructional process about laser focus, decoding, fluency, reading comprehension, and writing, all the relevant components, and allowing the core instruction. Educators and leaders have such a profound impact, and our students continue to change, and the money continues to change. This will help us for ourselves and our students, and that's also what we need to do. Provide opportunities for professional development and support our key focus areas. I remind us all here, this is where we'll lock people to move back to home. There is observable growth and clear student achievement, and that's to be celebrated. And that also means you cannot have a lack of urgency with the need to be able to value adjust. So that will also allow us to have a laser focus on evaluating how specific students are learning, while allowing scale and effectiveness, recognize differences in student learning, identify our high-leverage learning targets, evaluate other resources to meet eligibility on these courses, and hire a professional developer. And it continues to be on the right, focusing our efforts, time and resources, so there's ongoing support for our educators, and our students receive the opportunities and environment they're in.
Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to share with Karen?
I have a question. The PA Career Link looks like it's being a very big help to our high schoolers. I was curious, are a lot of students taking advantage of that? Or are they being sought out or referred to?
Today is day fifteen for me as well. I'm going to defer to Mr. Ariel to answer that question. So, our first day was on January 11th. And what we did was we identified the targeted students, about 30 students for the first day. Students who we knew were not going on to college and needed resources rather quickly. So that was the first day, and then we had a late start, I think, or something like that. But the second time they're coming is tomorrow. And we have disseminated links for the teachers and for the students and for parents to sign their kids up. So, we, on the first day, they met with about 30 students. It's open to anybody for, you know, summer jobs, internships, and they guarantee a job upon graduation as long as the student has completed their program. So, really only had one day, because it's no day. So, tomorrow will be day two. But it's open to everybody.
Awesome. I had one other, not for you, Beth, sorry. I had one other question. Ms. Trinkle, you referenced that letters training. Where did that, this is the first I think I've heard about it? And I was just curious where the, where that particular program came from, why it was chosen.
That was not two years ago.
Oh.
That was selected, as I understand it, and.
So, is it only being implemented now, or?
We started letters training before the pandemic. Pandemic and COVID was a finishing at a workshop. It seemed like a lot was happening. In the next two years, we either lose the information or maybe discuss a workshop. And what happened is COVID, so we got a few people sort of afraid because I'm even longer off of that training. Now we're getting that this year. Letters training really focuses in on the science of meaning and how the learner wants to read it. It's really important that these really, very much, teachers understand all the early skills that go into our. So that's what that focuses on.
That's the adults. I think it's a good background for what we're going to be doing.
That's your training for the adults.
Just, go ahead. That's fine, okay. Just quickly, what is the correlation between letters and then this Big Five program that you had up? Of course, I always think of the Big Five as Philadelphia basketball, but we'll ignore that for a minute. But how do they relate when it comes to phonics? And are they, are they a melded strategy, or are they separate things?
They're separate professional levels that support the science behind the Big Five. So it supplements our educators how to focus on the Big Five and understand the science behind how our kids are reading.
Can you just, touch base on the metrics that are used? You said about 80% of students will fall into a tier one, 10-15 into tier two, up to 5% into tier three.
That's a, that's a generalized metric of what type of school districts we fall under. And when we look at, we have a function on the TSS program that allows the K3 teams, child study teams, to take a look at how kids are reading and out of those tiers. So anything in time, those percentages may look different, given what the students may be presenting as a week, mid-year.
Do you have any idea what the past two years of education has, has done to those percentages, or where we're currently at?
I think I can certainly take a look at that for you.
Thanks.
Prior to COVID, we were at 50% traditionally scored data. I'm using third grade as a metric there. That's where the TSA star. So by the third grade level, we're all around 30% scored.
How about last year?
Last year, we still are, at reading our data and trying to understand it all. But this data is very cautious and ominous. I'll excuse that, because yes, there were so many variables that we needed to assess. Just the whole, we don't, we don't, that's a problem. That's, that takes, it's a variable, a lot of comparison. We'll get on that later.
Just as, as a board member, I would love to see that data, you know, regardless, at least the overall data, because I think it is important that we not glance over those, these past year of education.
We still haven't gotten one from the mentor.
Okay.
We've populated, the, the, we don't have that disclosed. It's actually, all of this year, we're not extended it that far. So, everything at the state kind of takes a little bit of time. And we still have a present administrative system which is going to be able to be the grade level. It's a dashboard, it's all, that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
We are committed to reporting data. And we, our effort at that was abbreviated because of time at one point, but we will be, November is going to be a big month for us with respect to reporting.
One comment in closing, since, you know, you are new here. I, I said this the last time, and I'm a huge proponent of the dual enrollment programs and also what's happening at Career Link with the Technical School and Career Awareness. I think they're absolutely critical, and I commend everybody for being involved in that because that is one of the few ways that secondary education can, can help to provide the right trajectory for an individual student as they move forward so that they know what their options are. And it's absolutely critical, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Trinkle. Okay, let's move on to, to public comments, please. Three minutes each. Lori Lyon.
Hi there, thank you all very much for just being on board during this time. When it's just super horrible that way to be on board. I appreciate all of you doing that during this time. And I appreciate the last time that you pretty much all voted in one way or another and in different varying degrees, but to move to have the masks be optional. And I appreciate that you all came together to do that. And anybody in the health field knows that there's many different approaches to health and to, you know, staying healthy and to even being sick and getting sick. And so, lung disease, which does not work for epidemic. And really, I thank you for respecting the parents, which this week, there are so many of you here. I thank you for respecting them to make good decisions about, about their kids, about our kids, about raising them, about having habits and keeping them all on their ship. And you're the ones who do that. And I think that's respectful, when you make that decision and then put that back in the parents' hands. One question I have, maybe you'll be able to answer it at some point, is the email that you sent out where it reports the probable or possible, or no, wait, well, positive and probable cases of COVID that we get in our email regularly. What does probable mean? I thought you were just trying to report the actual cases that tested positive for COVID and issued that e, the email that we get, but instead it says probable. And so I'm wondering, are you going off the daily screening? Which, you know, our kids in sports, and so they come home sometimes, they have a headache and fatigue, that's off two of the boxes, but it's certainly not because they have COVID. But I don't, but maybe that's not what's showing, showing up there. But I might keep them home for, because they have a fever. There's only reasons why I can't keep them out of fever, right? So, I'm hoping that you will adjust that or at least explain that and just show the actual positive test of cases from now on, on those things. Now, also, the policy 203, I feel like you have had that before because I filled out a lot of that paperwork for my child where I had to answer, you know, what vaccines they had and, and what their health history is. And it sounded like there was some confusion there. I feel like I've seen that before. So, I was wondering what was different in this policy? It looks to be the same to me. And to address what you were talking about, miss school and homework. Our kids have missed school for periods of time before COVID. And the teachers are fabulous in giving us, like, the assignments when we, as parents, ask for them. And in high school, they can just look up and see. So I don't know why that's something that you're worried about because we have great teachers that if we ask for them, those teachers give us that information. Thank you.
First off, Ambrose.
I was recently informed that people think I don't make any sense when I speak up here, so for those people tonight, I'll be very clear. And last meeting, the members of the school board voted in favor of the district moving to mask optional policy for students and staff. You voted in favor of allowing parents to make risk assessments and medical decisions for our own children for the first time in 17 months. I want to personally thank you for your votes to place these parental powers back in the hands of community members that attend these board meetings and voted to have you on the board in the first place. I will also thank all dissenting votes for standing firm on their stance to ending the mandate immediately, letting this decision rest in the hands of parents. This is a fantastic step toward leveling the scale of fairness and balance regarding this topic. Most common dissenting argument to allowing masks to be optional has been just not right at that, which is what many ask you, not now, when? The goalpost continue to be moved. However, the ability to compromise at the last meeting should be highlighted and be a reminder to all that there are more people in the community than just the person that you see in the mirror. We are not alone. I do not want to live in a society that accepts being controlled by one group of people because that is not how our founding fathers envisioned life in a free country. Instead, they dissolve their political bands and work together to form a place where power, real power, rests in the hands of the government, all of us. I pray that with this decision, our community will come together and start seeing each other as equals once again. Sadly, there are people that want this policy to fail. Without even getting a different approach, you try. I know this because both social media exists, and these people are vocal on it. These people are openly discussing options to get medical professionals fired because of their private opinions, name-calling by a former school board president, and orchestrated plans to do whatever it takes to make this policy fail and/or bully those who voted in favor of it. This is not unity. This is not compromise, and this is not patriotism. I'm extremely thankful to live in a country where life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are granted to us not by government, but by God. And while I may no longer wear uniform, I will always fight for our God-given rights and for your right to disagree with my opinions. Thank you again, board members, for working together. May God bless you, and may God bless this community.
Carrie Gutman.
Good evening. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. It's wonderful to hear that we're getting back to education on top of this in the school district. I love that. I want to thank the school board for their last oath and to make that shout. I know you guys, it's tough for the community as a whole to come together on this. We all have our very strong opinions, you heard mine. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to give this a shot. And it was interesting to walk in here tonight and see the protesting and hearing their, their side of it. And I, I get having a strong opinion, I'm golden in that. But here's one thing I, I want to say is, for almost two years now, we have masks on our children in cloth and paper for masks, mostly, large portion of it. Now, all of a sudden, they're saying that it's got to be the N95. So, for the past two years, we haven't protected our children, even though we think we have. We, that was the goal, right? To protect our children. But it was negated. In those past almost two years with the masking on, now they're showing that all of the one, the United Studies are on what is done to our younger kids, our elementary kids, as far as learning. So technically, we harmed them. We didn't protect them from the virus. We didn't help them learn. We actually harmed them. Now, a lot of, I should say, a percentage of the community wants the masks to stay in place. But if we're harming our kids and it's not protecting them without the N95, which we just put in place, what's the point? It doesn't make sense, other than people are scared and don't like change. Large portion of the population does not like a change. They fight it. That's not necessarily a good thing. It's not necessarily a bad thing. But what it is, is not helping our kids. So, again, first time on my mouth to this board. Thank you.
Doug Durham.
Kids are questionable. And teachers are hard to teach. Kids are a captive audience. Teachers are hired and paid to teach to the subject matter. Two weeks ago, I and another community member had a productive meeting with superintendent Mahon. Part of the subject matter of that meeting was the issue of political signage in the classroom. I'm appealing to this board to set policy regarding any signage in the classroom that does not continue to correct it, particularly if a reasonable person would find the signage political in nature and if it fails to be non-neutral. It appeared to me, and Dr. Mahon can correct me, that he agreed with this in principle, but he needs your help in establishing a policy. I brought this issue before the administration of Dr. Mahon approximately two months ago. And I have been patient. I believe now is the time for the board to act to protect the voices, perspective, and rights of all students and their families. Teachers do not have the right to impose their religious, political, or ideological views on a captive audience, their students. That is currently happening in our high school, and it is not acceptable. This should be, we, this should be universally condemned by all people of good faith and goodwill and by all reasonable people. I ask this board to please act to remedy this situation as soon as possible. Thank you.
David Smith.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the school board this evening. My name is David Smith. I'm one of the members as well as one of the pastors of Community Baptist Church. This church is one of the two churches in the district, one of which you are seeking to claim tax monies for the year of 2018 based upon a clerical error after our nonprofit, through a nonprofit purchase of the Lower Milford Elementary Building. We consider ourselves blessed to be the owners of this building. We believe it to be a divine appointment by God's good hand of providence for this church body. We thank the Lord that He has seen fit His goodness to allow us to be a blessing to the constituents of the Southern Lee High School District. We pray that the school board would see the blessing of having a local church who reaches out to the homes and families within their district. We do not seek to profit off of the members of your district nor should the school board profit off this local church. In fact, we are endeavoring by the grace of God to give back to the members of the district. We believe that the saving hope of Jesus Christ changes lives and that He makes a difference in the lives and homes within our community. As lives are impacted by the truth of the Word of God, this will only bring positive influence in the halls and classrooms of your schools. God displays this local church in your district, we thank the Lord for that. We believe it's our responsibility to reach out to the young people who attend Southern Lee High Schools. This we have done with our children's outreach and ministries. We have reached out to the fathers and grandfathers of the district with men's ministries and outrages, recognizing that a majority of the criminal behavior that takes place stems from bottomless homes. In many other ways, CDC seeks to reach out to the residents of this school district. We pray for the Southern Lee High School Board. We pray for the families and homes in this district. It would be our prayer that the school board would acknowledge the non-profit status of this church body and that they might allow this church body to continue to reach out to the residents of your district free from the heavy burden of real estate taxes and ongoing litigation for a clerical error. We believe that the school board seeking to charge this non-profit local church school taxes is not a just action. We gratefully acknowledge the Lower Milford Township who immediately forgave any taxes for the 2018 year. They recognized that Community Baptist Church was indeed a nonprofit entity. We humbly and respectfully petition the school boards to recognize the same. I was privileged to be here at one of your prior meetings. Last time we were here, the superintendent said that you folks had an open door office policy. He endeavored to take you up on this offer and received no response. I personally reached out to two of the newest members of the school board, and I congratulate, by the way, the new members. I received no response from the members. I feel that Southern Lee High School Board, would you please know that you're looking at the families some here tonight who reside in your district? I have my four young children here this evening with me. Some of our families come from other school districts. As families, we all pay our school taxes individually as Community Baptist Church members. These members assemble together in the Lower Milford School Building to worship our worthy God. The entity which you're seeking 2018 school taxes in body of tax-
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, your time is up.
One final thing, we pray that the school board would do a courageous and righteous thing in recognizing the 2018 tax exempt status of this local church ministry who seeks and prays for the worshiping of God in heaven and the families of children in our school district. Could you not let this ministry free from this habit tax burden? Thank you.
Jonathan Stockton.
Hello, thank you for being so long here. And I'm also a part of the Community Baptist Church, I'm one of the pastors there and I, you know, I have three young children, my wife and I do. And we, we pay school taxes and we're not profiting off of the sale of this, it was a nonprofit sale, a nonprofit sale. So our church really is a charity, we don't profit off of the church. The church is a business, the members don't make money. The money that the church has is given, it's the highest of God's people. So we already pay all of our taxes and on top of that, the people of our church give sometimes 10%, sometimes more than that, to God's work so that it can function. And that includes many of the things that Pastor Smith there mentioned. And many other things, many, many other helps like community that we accomplish across the world and in the areas. The school district, you know, whether it's intentional or not, doesn't need this money. It doesn't need to be taking this money from this work. But this is money that we cannot replace. We already all pay our taxes. So it's a non, it's a nonprofit situation. Someone may be telling you, I'm not sure that you can't deal with it. You could, you could remove the whole thing with this, with a swipe of your electronic pen. Really good. And I wouldn't say any God passed it for you legally or future issues. This is, this is a once in a lifetime view, it's not something that's, that's going to occur again. I, I'm not, I'm not God, so I couldn't guarantee that. So it probably won't happen again. So, you know, I'm sure that your, that your teachers, that you folks on the school board want the students and the children here in this school to be taught all that decent thing with goodwill, torment. And so I think that that would be a great way for you to model that, for them to be an example to be decent in this, in this matter. Because that's really what it comes down to, it's, it's what is, what is normal, decent, and what will be regular to accomplish. A clerical error, tax hundred, thousand, thousand, dollar based on that. Yeah, I asked him not to do that to me, I'm back taxes from years ago if I, if I failed to pay my taxes. So I would again ask him to consider that, consider what's happening at higher level, real families and real people, real children. Thank you.
David Smith.
Thank you very much. It'd be great to talk. Last time I saw him, I mean, I was scared of looking back at the talks I would do then. Well, thanks for the opportunity. I want to congratulate the new school board members wherever they may be. My name again is also David J. Smith, I was on David J's board. I want to hire taxpaying citizens of Lee High School District, Lee High County. This unjust, unjust tax issue's been going on almost four years now. And in charge, if you know that sort of ancillary mediation of some sort with school board, this is why we reach out. Frankly, I'm a little sound with this one school. The church has been in existence for eighteen years. We've moved seven times. I've not seen such a skiff on my posture from any government body. Including Quaker Town Borough, Rachel Town, Pensbury, Telford Boroughs, Milford Township, Marrow Township, Hanover Township, Lower Milford Township, Buckland, Montgomery, Lee High County. My appeal to this board is for reconsideration. If you're responsible for five one six two taxes, that's a non-profit organization. This is church ministry within your school district. We want to work together. We've gotten some kind of resolution. That would be beneficial to you and long-term, you Baptist Church. Before I leave, I want to thank the families of the CVC which stand in favor of that decision. Thanks all in the board members.
Jim Smith.
Started walking out, I was there, I signed the, 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 yeah. I'm Jim Smith. I represent Community Baptist Church. I wanted to bring the board's attention and over a year ago, I met with church leadership, who you've met, cutting, to discuss how we would manage this play. And the church considered that and considers now the school district a community partner sincerely confident and continues to hope to resolve this dispute adequately. Church leadership knew that such a resolution would require, would require a generous, well-reasoned offer extended in humility and instructed me to send you my January eighth, two thousand twenty-one letter, which I have copies here if anyone would like one. If any members of the board would like one, you can ask your superintendent or your solicitor for a copy of that letter. I should note that the offer extended as gracious as it was to you in my last year's letter is not reflected in my assessment of the strength of their arguments, appealable was rather an honest, humble attempt to get this matter resolved in a manner that was equitable and fair and just. That offer, I am sad to say, was summarily rejected without anything in the way of an explanation. Despite repeated attempts to engage this school board in an honest discussion about an equitable resolution, we, the church, have received absolutely nothing in the way of feedback from the school board. Nothing. You heard one of the pastors reference twice being invited by Dr. Mann during a meeting in November. We have an open door policy, I would love to speak with you and the church was excited about that. I, of course, can't juggle that directly, but I did reach out to your attorney, never got a response. The church leadership reached out to Dr. Mann's office on several occasions, never got even a response. And so I'm, I'm, I'm befuddled by the lack of exercise on part of the school board to make this thing go away for both of our group. You didn't, you did hear Pastor Smith mention that the county of the law court, intermediate public court, Harrisburg, were, were at now. Thought this was a good case for mediation, that's why they put us on the track. We submitted our memorandum. The school board never submitted it. I'll mention real quickly that the, uh, good, uh, I look at the clock, pastors. This is different, that we, we are discussing with the county and negotiating resolution of their tax claims. They, we, they have extended to us an offer that is very similar to what is laid out in your January eighth letter. But I'll remind you that the county is in a very different position. They didn't sell the church's property, they didn't know of its over assessed value, they didn't know of its intended use, and they certainly didn't fight us for a year, it's four years, extending a crazy amount of attorney's fees and doing so. I would ask, churches ask tonight, this is simply because I'm the last person to speak for the church. We would ask you for the courtesy of a substantive response to the January eighth, two thousand twenty-one letter that we submitted to this, uh, this board that's made up of this board. Thank you.
Nicole Doolan.
Hello, believe it or not, I'm not here to ask you to reinstate the universal masking policy. While I would like that for all the same reasons I had during this search, I'm setting that aside for now. What I am here to talk about is having a fail safe. There have been many members of the community who have asked at meeting after meeting for you, for you to at least set some terms for what situation would warrant, warrant reinstating a temporary universal masking policy. At the last worship workshop, the tiered policy that was discussed was an example of what I would consider to be a fail safe. But at the board meeting that followed, Jeff Divitt said he didn't need a chart to tell them that cases were decreasing. Having that position is fine, but there are two areas where that position is lacking. First, it does not address what to do when cases are decreasing. Second, the administration has no autonomy. As the health and safety plan stands right now, if something took a turn in the next couple of days, just hypothetically, the administration has no guidelines that would allow them to institute a universal masking period. They would have to wait until the next board meeting, which in this case is three weeks away. I'm not here to tell you what those terms should be. You should be taking advice from health network presidents to determine that. It sounds like a fixed threshold of case rates is not something this board can reach consensus on. Maybe you should incorporate the rising or falling trends of cases in the community. Maybe it should be related to the rising or falling cases within our schools. Please don't just put your head in the sand and tell yourself that we will never reach any critical point that would warrant a temporary return to universal masking. Don't give them the fail safe anyway. If you're right, we'll never have to use it. But if you're wrong and our administration doesn't have options for slowing the spread, we could reach a point where entire schools roll back, roll back to a virtual model. As long as you implement something that gives our administration the flexibility to pivot when needed, you will have at least this community number off your back on this topic. With the time of our meeting, I'd like to ask that someone update the community about when child size KN-95s are expected to arrive. I've already sent some emails to central office and I haven't received that type of ETA. And for the record, wanting KN-95 masks does not mean that any lesser mask offered no protection this whole time. Surgical masks, when readily available, which are readily available and relatively inexpensive, do offer protection when everyone wears them. Now that we're no longer in the universal masking environment, those who choose to mask need KN-95s to have the same level of protection that they had back when everyone wore masks. Thank you.
Mark Colpon.
My name is Mark Colpon, I'm on emergency position. I've treated countless level nations over the past two years. I have two children in the district and one of his children to be vaccinated. I honestly cannot believe that I'm standing here again to address the board again on this issue, but here we are, again. This issue is not going away because sadly pandemic does not get walked away. Your wishful thinking is a clarinet otherwise simply does not make it so anymore than you offer leadership on the movie Don't Hook Up to Protect Boy and His Disaster. If you haven't seen the movie, I believe you all would have been for a few again, perhaps more than once. For those of us who follow science, it hits a little bit too close to home. To the anti-mask board members, no matter how many loud, cushy followers massage and figure you though, you are still wrong. That's our past. Health organizations are not going to have it with anti-vaccinizations and all in short, and all of them universally disagree with this. But the decision has to look back today. You have failed our children, their teachers, and our community. Today, some families have to choose between the child's education and their family's health. A choice no family should have perhaps away. Let's be clear, the alternative vaccines and masking is while I'm hoping to spread watch out to the area. But education is very different, that's your regular vaccine use. Choices for families of those who are school district. It's a necessity and a right for all children to have a safe learning environment. Right now, a safe learning environment includes masks as recommended by every professional health organization. All children's parents have the right to then decide how they will spend their time outside of school and whether they will mask as how socially they will behave. However, students who are at risk or have at-risk family members can easily avoid these extracurricular activities on personal choice. What can I, what they can and shouldn't avoid is in-person school. They must be able to attend in-person school without risking their family, period. You are violating their right to education. I don't expect that you care, but let's not say you weren't warned that the actions are, the actions you are taking against overwhelming health regulations have been found illegal in Pennsylvania already. Individual school board members may either be found personally liable for any serious illness that results from their negligent policies. Again, personally viable. I hope you will reconsider your decision before that happens. Finally, what are you doing to our area? You're sending away thousands of test dollars as part of Academy Charms schools. You are lowering our property values, this has become an undesirable school district. You're proposing this to, you're, you're proposing this to becoming undesirable position for teachers. And in final, teachers are hard cut by a majority of teachers support masks in some of the high school district. But the six of you willing to not support our teachers or support the rights to our safe environment. This decision has been, has been medically irresponsible, but also financially, legally, and serving the board with your thoughts.
Dr. Young, your time is up. Stephen Pearson. Oh, I apologize, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank the board for their decision to make mask optional. I know no matter what you guys decide after the room here, so to be happy with you from the other side, it'd be unhappy. Um, but I appreciate the willingness to do this. I also wanted to give Mr. Maan a shout out. Last board meeting, we were, looked like the vote was going to go as, as originally planned for the eleventh to do this. So I appreciate him stepping in and trying to figure out some way to compromise or some alternate solution to help, you know, smooth over some of those votes that had some more concerns. So I appreciate him, yeah, willing to put this back in weeks. So I was not very real happy with, but I appreciate him trying to find, pick it up out of the box and try to find some alternate solutions. Really, I want to add real quick, but my concern right now is for these kids who are, are not wearing masks and how the teachers are handling that. There are multiple reports in the last two weeks of the teachers. One teacher said that the kids that are here without masks today, we're going to be having to go out in the hallway. Um, I got a picture today of the teacher who posted something on their chalkboard. Clearly stating that if you were unmasked, it was a negative thing. So I would ask this board that when complaints are made, or, uh, Mr. Webb talked about, you know, putting some language in the document. I think that's a great start, but we're, uh, we're naive to think that just putting some sentences in the document is going to get anything. So I think there needs to be a clear verbal communication that this is not acceptable. And if this happens, there's going to be repercussions and there's going to be accountability for themselves. I don't think it's fair that a kid, whether they're masked or unmasked, or should not be pleading and is derogatory against them either way. It's not one side or the other. If somebody's wearing a mask and they're being bullied or intimidated, that's wrong as well. Right now, it's a hot topic and we need to make sure that these folks who aren't on this is a school mandated rule or it's a school policy and it's not made by all of us in some kind of way. So I hope that the board, if any of these come across your desk, that is considered seriously an N B A. Thank you.
Well, Steve Pearson.
I'd like to go through our policy issues regarding the current mask adoption plan. The COVID has a frame of reference to mask adoption, not a viable solution. It creates more problems than it solves, both operationally and legally. So open your policy votes, and I'm going to paraphrase the topic. I want to go over that section. Section 001 states that the board does not intend a policy to be unreasonable. Prior to voting, the board was informed that mask adoption would make contact tracing nearly impossible and that the district would lose a large quantity of substitute teachers. It is unreasonable to increase the workload of a dwindling staff. Regardless, the board does continue to act on this policy knowing that it's unreasonable. And the next thing I heard is that if you don't feel safe, work in homes. Section 101, Philosophy of Education, states that the district should provide equal educational opportunities for each student. Teachers have stated multiple times that virtual learning is not as effective as in person, which makes virtual learning a lesser form of education. With mask adoption, there are students and families with health issues who may be forced to learn virtually, putting them at a disadvantage in their peers at no cost of their own. Section 103 further explains the importance. It not only covers the student, but also extends to the family of the student. It's unlawful to tell students who have an immunocompromised family member to stay home. And then the last issue that I want to go over is the parent's right to choose, help, make health decisions. They actually do have this right, but only up to a certain point. Section 221, Addressing Grouping, it states that there will be no interference from the district regarding personal health choices except when those choices present a hazard to the health and safety of others. As it stands, you're not allowed to have a policy where the health choices of one student can affect the health of another. That is a current policy book, and it swatches this whole debate about personal rights to choose. If a board member continues to argue to this point, they are directly violating section 221 of your school policies. The current mask adoption plan is really obvious and negative consequences regarding staffing and student health, and also discriminates against students with family members who are immunocompromised. The board needs to start playing by the rules because you're setting up an unfair, unsafe educational environment. You're going against the mission of this school this year. Thank you.
That ends our, uh, public comment section. So we have a two-minute break to stand up and stretch or use, uh, the restrooms. Okay, folks, you had, you had 10 minutes, not two. Please take your seats. Uh, folks, I'm going to remind everybody to speak into their microphones. It's very hard for the folks who are listening in via online formats to hear if you're not speaking into your microphone. Okay? All right, with that, Sharon, you want a motion? You are next.
I do not have any summary updates for tonight, thank you.
Okay. So let's take, uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 10th?
I'm, I'm sorry, just a second. Do we have to announce that we met in executive session?
We're gonna, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's hard, I'm over here.
We will announce it, but I don't have the exact date since I wasn't here last time.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, so we'll still announce it tonight?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm, I didn't hear that well. I apologize.
Sorry, my bad.
Okay, so we need a motion. I'm going to take, uh, B and C together to approve the board minutes and the board workshop minutes from January 10th, 2022. Is that good? Any comments or questions, concerns?
I actually have, um, a few for the school board meeting minutes. Under item B, Health and Safety Plan. Um, I, I, I understand why this new format of minutes, I appreciate what it's trying to do. It's just there, there are a few things. Let me try to find it. Ah, at the very end, the last paragraph, it says Jeffrey Dim, Jeff Dimick noted, "The motion would need to be effective from the start of the school day to the end of the school day." I believe earlier in this paragraph, it was said to have his support, it would need to state that. And I think that phrase is missing from this sentence. Jeff, um, I know, I see you're looking at it. If you go up to, uh, comments were made by Jeff Dimick noting he would consider a motion to extend masking. However, he would not support mask, taking masking until 2:28. He would support it, you know, it goes on to say a different date. Later on, I'm just suggesting that you stated the same thing. You stated Jeff Dimick noted, I'm suggesting to add, "To have his support, the motion would be, need to be effective from the start of the school day to the end of the school day." There's no other reason it would need to be that way other than to gain your support. And I'd request that we add the words "to have his support" between noted and that motion. Does that make sense, Jeff?
Sure, I, I don't object to that.
Thanks. And I, just in general, I was going to say, I understand what this format of minutes is trying to do. But just by including a detailed record with these questions and comments, but you couldn't include all questions and comments, including some but not all. Sometimes I think the overall effect can present an inaccurate picture.
Okay, but Jeff, Jeff is agreed. So with the edit, um, any other comments?
Yes, I have another for workshop, in workshop, under Staffing and Public Outreach, of the presentation by, uh, Human Research Director Anthony Pidgen. The second page, it says that questions were addressed by Jeffrey Dimick and Christopher Wayack. I also asked a series of questions. I'd appreciate if my name were added to that. And then, very close, let's see, the, um, last, second to last sentence of the workshop minutes. It says, there's a sentence that says, "Our community is split on this issue." Fifty-fifty, referring to the is, issue of masking, I believe. If that's attributed to someone else, as many of these statements are, could we identify who that was? But I don't think, just as a general statement, we have any data to support that. So if that's a comment by a board member, I'd like that to be indicated as such. But just for the sentence to read, "Our community is split on this issue fifty-fifty," I, I don't see. I'd like to either eliminate that or have somebody now claim that they said that one way or the other. I, so either eliminate, I, I've been, seeing no one claiming it, I would suggest that we eliminate that sentence.
I, I believe that comment was attributed to Ms. Gangware.
Kyle, is that attributed to you?
I don't remember.
She, you're saying you don't?
I don't remember.
Her mic isn't on, but she's saying she doesn't remember. Would you, would you be in favor of striking it?
I'll, or strike it, it doesn't make a difference.
I do read, like, the way I read these, these minutes in general, it seems to me that, for instance, that one, Kyle Gangware, and then a number of sentences follow. I, at least in my reading of it, I would assume that, that it's meant, it's not just a statement of the board saying it's fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that was my question, okay.
So I think in, in general, with that, to your point, maybe it's just helpful for the people to read the minutes that way. But I think, uh, I see it the way Mary Joyce sees it, which is, you know, there's a couple of sentences after Kyle Gangware said blah, 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 blah. I assume all of that's attributed to her.
Well, and I, we think that's can be solved with some punctuation, a colon and, and several sub, semi-colons to separate her statements. And I think that makes it clear, okay? So with the two revisions, one to the minutes and one to the workshop.
We don't need to re-motion it, do we?
Okay, can we take a vote? Any other comments before we vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, um, Mike, uh, Ms. Doctor Mann?
Right, so first I, I want to begin by noting that this, that January is School Board Appreciation Month. And, uh, that brings an immediate smile to each and every member on the board as I look down at the table. And, and I just, I, I, I thought I'd take just a very brief moment to offer some thoughts. First, um, it has been my privilege to be able to work with this board. And I can tell you that while there is policy disagreements to the person, each and every member of this board is doing his and her very, very best to advance the interest of the school district and the students. And it is a great privilege for those who know the members of the board, uh, to be able to serve with them. I will also tell you that, um, school boards have been abandoned by federal authorities, by state authorities, by agencies. And no matter how frustrated we are with whatever And no matter how frustrated we are with whatever comes through, there's no reason for this board to be put in the position that it's in to make these decisions that it has been forced to make. Because we say, take the opinions of the experts or whatever, they have all abandoned us, governors, legislators, medical agencies, departments, and all of them have washed their hands and left these hard decisions to the people who are standing up and making them, and that is the school board. So regardless of where anyone comes for the, you should be very proud of the fact that you, unlike everyone else in the Commonwealth, you're doing the job, and you should be very proud of it regardless of how you foresee or envision that job to be. So, um, while every January for twenty-two years, I've been making perfunctory comments about congratulations at School Board Month, I really mean them more than ever this year because really, this year you should be appreciated more than you've ever been. So I say with a sincere, a sincere, uh, voice and in response to our administration, and yes, on behalf of the community, thank you for the work that you do. And, and now I would, I would ask the board to consider a motion for the first reading of Board Policy Two-O-three, and perhaps it could be a motion discussion because I know there were some thoughts on, on that, that policy.
One second. So with just a couple, I'd like to rephrase the first paragraph under authority. So currently it reads, "In order to safeguard the school community from the spread of certain communicable diseases, the board requires that mandates and orders from state and local health officials, establish board policy and administrative regulations, and board-approved health and safety plans be followed by students, parents, guardians, and district staff." So I'd like to rephrase that, um, to state, "In order to safeguard the school community from the spread of certain communicable diseases, the board will consider the guidance and orders from state and local health officials. Upon that consideration, the board requires that established board policy and administrative regulations and board-approved health and safety plans be followed by students, parents, guardians, and district staff."
But this says mandates and orders, we can't refuse to follow mandates and orders from the state and local health decisions, right?
The school board can do that, yes.
Well, Dr. Wayak, when I, when I, yeah, let, let me just, I, I think I, when, when this was, one of the, the formulations that occurred here, that was given as a possible language, was that to safeguard the school community from the spread of communicable diseases, the board requires that mandates and guidance, and it was, the word was guidance was used, and I, I thought guidance should be struck, I think for the precise reasons that you're suggesting, that it be a local decision, that we not be bound by guidance. However, in changing to mandates and orders, I was thinking along the lines of, say, the school bus situation where we find ourselves in, where I do not think that the board would want or should provide anything other than we must follow such a mandate. So I read orders and, and I, I wrote orders and mandates to reflect things like, you have a case of measles, the school must be closed. Or the rule must be, must from authorities, not like CDC guidance, you must have a mask or not a mask, or quarantine or not. Those are excluded, but I, I'd hope to put in things that are really established under law that we must do in using those words, which may not come through, or that you may be still objecting to it, but that was my hope in putting the words in as, as I, as I did.
I'm just concerned about that, that term, you know, mandate, and who's, who it comes from, is this, you know, what if you have an executive order from, you know, from the governor, or even an executive order from state?
Right, and I, I, I get that, and like, for, for example, a lot of people in, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of people say that the bus thing is illegal and can't be done, right? And, and maybe they're right, it probably are, for all I know. But the idea is that until something is changed in court, we have this obligation to follow it along because we can't, it's the court that makes that determination, not us. So if a mandate comes along, even if it's an unfounded mandate that's ultimately overturned, according to this policy, we would follow it because I think that is our obligation under the law, but I'm getting way out of my lane here, and you could, uh, correct me if I'm wrong.
Absolutely, the, um, you would, there was a mention earlier, and I know that our office has issued the opinion that, if it is a legal mandate, not a guidance, not, you know, that you are required to follow it, and failure to do so will put the board, the district, and potentially create personal liability for intentionally deciding not to follow a legal mandate, even if you believe that the legal mandate is wrong, it is enforceable upon a district until such time as a court tells us it's not enforceable. Then you're free to do what, whatever the board would choose to do. But while it is a mandate that is issued by a governing authority, uh, authority that is, that can govern us, we have to follow that, whether we believe it's legally issued or not. So I, I would concur that, that as this states here in the policy, the drafted policy mandates and orders, that's very limited. That is limited to things that are required of the district, of the school board, by a governing authority that has authority over a school board to issue that, such as a health department could issue a health order that you would be subject to. You can, districts have chosen not to comply, but, um, it would not be advisable in terms of liability.
Yeah, I mean, we're already ignoring guidance, so I'm not sure why you're worried. It's not in there.
Any other comments or revisions, recommendations?
I just had a question, um, strictly just for my own edification. At the end, the bold type, please remove the following language in writing policies and note the cross-reference, I understand that. But the note about if the district replaces this language in policy during draft revisions, it's all right to keep in policy? Could someone just help me understand what that means?
That, that was attached from the PSBA when it came along, and, and I, I, there are a couple of things that I did alter in here, for example, I thought it was a little too loose in saying gotta follow guidance, but, but that was there, so I left it. I, I was tempted to get it, just leave it, so that question wouldn't be raised, but I don't know.
I understand, I understand most of it, it's just that I thought there was an easy explanation, but very, whenever PSVPA puts something in here, they have a reason, so that answers my question.
That won't appear in the final document, but I just, I left it there because I wasn't quite sure what it meant, and I thought, well, let me not scratch something.
Right, right, so that won't appear in the final document, from the bold on down?
Yep.
Thank you, that makes, that makes sense to me, I appreciate it.
I can give a little bit of explanation on that.
Yes, please.
On that removal, that is language from the old sort of standard-issue PSBA policy, and that was when, that was pre-COVID, and that had to do with general reporting for communicable diseases. It was not intended in a, in a COVID situation where we're, it's changing so frequently.
So we're, we're affecting policy given what we've already learned, so we're improving as we go, in other words?
That's correct.
Okay, good, in favor of that, thanks.
So in looking at some other districts in Pennsylvania that have Policy Two-O-three and revised them as recently as twenty twenty, November of twenty twenty, the, the word mandate does not seem to be used. What they have, "In order to safeguard the school community from the spread of certain communicable diseases, the board requires that guidance and orders from state and local officials, establish board policy, administrative regulations, and board-approved health and safety plans be followed by students, persons, uh, in parental relation, and district staff."
Right, and I got rid of the word guidance because I thought it was too loose.
Yeah, I actually agree with Dr. Man, I mean, I think that's worse.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I, I agree, we both have to be bound by mandates.
I'd have loved to have guidance in there, but, you know.
I, I took guidance out for the exact reason that, uh, Dr. Wayak, I think, was suggesting, that this might be too loose. Because I was, I, I'm good with this, and I thought the board would not be good with guidance, and so I took, I took guidance.
Some of us are.
So, right, I collect that, I knew very well that members of the board would be very tough with guidance. So I thought, you know, to, to streamline the discussion, I took, I switched it out, out of respect for what would surely be those concerns raised. So that, that, that is evidence that I, I swapped a word, I think, because mandates was a stronger standard for us than guidance.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor of the consideration, action of the first read of the new board policy? Two-O-three on immunization and communicable diseases? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Do we need to, we'll call this, okay, no? Okay, opposed, anyone opposed?
No, no. Would you like us to raise our hands just so you can record that accurately?
Just for Emery.
Yeah, just, Emery, let us know when you have it.
Okay. So the first read?
Three opposed.
Three opposed.
Do you need those hands?
We're good. We're good.
Okay. So the motion carries for the first read.
Right, and now we're moving on to consideration and action, we asked the board, uh, to consider approving, uh, tonight's version of the Southern Lee High School District, our health and safety plan as discussed during our workshop session.
I just had some questions. So just the, the first page of our health and safety plan, um, it, it struck me when I was reviewing all of it. It clearly states that this plan was developed in collaboration with St. Luke's. I, I'm not so sure that that's really the case anymore. And I, you know, and I, and I think it's an important point to make, um, from my perspective, because I wasn't sure, you know, it's my understanding that St. Luke's, um, provides all their partner school districts with recommendations, um, and they actually just issued some updated ones to help reflect the new CDC guidelines. And, you know, I, I get that it's, um, it's been lost, um, with respect to, um, the group that we have here, up here today, and now moving forward. However, you know, I thought it was important to at least mention that they continue to recommend masking, they continue to distinguish, um, between, you know, asymptomatic, symptomatic, vaccinated, and unvaccinated. And certainly, um, I have it available for anyone who would be, um, interested in learning more about it, if, if anyone would like to hear about it up here today, but I've gotten the impression that, um, my fellow, some of my fellow board members are not receptive to even knowing more about it. But I, I do think that that's a bit problematic, because it, you know, in the past, um, when I was on.
I'm sorry, did you, those are the updated ones, like, recently updated?
Yes.
Did we get those?
My understanding was that it was.
I didn't see them.
I know, I, I got it through, um, providers that I know who are medical directors in other districts, so.
I'm not sure I, I received them, I, I very well could be mistaken, and it could be in my inbox somewhere, but I, I'm not aware.
According to, um, our, um, consulting pediatrician, it was.
Well, I watch.
It should have been provided, so.
They do present to us at our superintendent's meetings.
Right.
So I've heard them.
And I think there was one recently, and that's when I think this was given out, um, I mean, and, and.
Are they specific to Southern Lee High School District, or are they the same recommendations that are given to all of the districts that that healthcare partner services?
Well, we are within the same geographical area of the Lee High Valley, but yes.
Same one that, you know, the same recommendations that they give, maybe?
Because Southern Lee High is encountering the same pandemic that is being encountered by other districts like Parkland.
So they're, they're the same, though?
Yeah, like Parkland, and Parkland has a tiered plan, just gonna throw it out there.
But these are the guidelines that were recommended, you're saying, by our, um,
we each have a medical director, and our medical director continues to recommend these. So that is individualized to each district, so you know.
Is our medical director allowed to make their own opinions in that regard?
She did not provide her own opinion, she is providing what her institution is providing.
So what is it that you're recommending we do?
Well, thanks, Jeff, I appreciate you asking.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, just quickly, I think it was a little presumptuous that I may not want to look at those.
Well, I'm masking, yeah.
Please email those to me, I would appreciate it, thank you.
I agree, I agree with Mr. Mon's point, I mean, I, I'm not, in the spirit of trying to move things forward, I don't think that type of, uh, accusation is, is appropriate, um, I, I am more than happy.
It's not an accusation, Jeff, but you guys have made it really clear that you don't understand that the, that there is clearly a difference between personal, when personal choice conflicts with the health and safety of other parents' children, there's a problem. And, and you should know as a lawyer, too, right, that Jacobson versus Massachusetts in nineteen oh-five, when it came to smallpox, for example, you know, the Supreme Court has ruled in, in that direction, too. So I, I assumed that the district had it, I, I'll be honest with you, I assumed that we had it, because my understanding is that it's provided to all districts and the administration team. My understanding is that when the agenda is, because I've tried in the past to put things on the agenda, um, and I was, it didn't happen because of the perception of what the majority of the board was going to want. So my understanding would, is, because I'm not an officer, is that it was decided amongst those that are, how this would move forward, I, I mean, I don't think it's unfair for me to assume that. I can certainly pass it around if you wanna look at it, it's basically what we've been saying. You know, masking right now because the rates are extremely high, yes, they're starting to come down, which is fantastic, but they're still significantly higher than they were at any other point in the pandemic. I had basically wanted to mask at least a couple of more weeks because it's gonna come down. Hospitalizations and deaths lag two weeks behind the peak, it's a standard pattern, regardless of which variant it is. That's what I would suggest, they are continuing to recommend quarantines, of course, which I know we can enforce, so that's a little bit of a moot point, I think. They are recommending masking, just like the CDC does for the five days that a student returns from a known positive case or a staff member. We can enforce that, um, which I think is a concern, right? You know, how are we gonna keep track of that? And parents are worried, we don't have the track, you know, I'm, I'm just voicing some of the concerns that we've heard from some community members, and I, I realize that I'm a part of the minority, and to be frank with you, um, it's not so much that I'm trying to be presumptuous or, or, you know, unkind to you, I think it's more my frustration, um, at this point, because, um, to a certain degree, I've been asked, you know, why do you keep, you know, it's great that you keep fighting, and I wonder to myself why I do. But then I get these emails, and I'm like, you know, I feel, I feel like I, I have to, because somebody has to speak for them, just like you did, Jeff, you know, for the preceding two years, when you weren't in the majority, but you tended to reason.
When the experts, when the experts, they all told us that getting out of school was the right thing to do.
No, they didn't tell you that.
Yeah, they did.
No.
They told us, close the schools down, and I sat here and told you I thought that was a horrendous idea, did I have any of the data? No, because we've never done it before, right?
Now, Jeff, the thing is, this has changed over time.
The same folks now say, the same folks say, right, oh, we gotta keep all the kids in school. And, and so I say, I say this is, and you say, it's so clear, I don't find the guidance, yes, I consider St. Luke's, and yes, I listen to you, and yes, I listen to all these fine doctors that come here and speak to us, I do.
I know you do.
But I'm telling you from a person that does try to listen to it all, I don't find it to be clear, and I also don't find it,
You know why it doesn't seem clear?
I don't think in real time anybody exactly does know what's going on.
Right, that's the problem, right?
Right.
So this is what's happened, this thing has lasted forever, and I'm tired of it more than, I, I think we all are, right? I'm not gonna assume that it's more for me than anyone else. But the thing is, this disease has changed over time, and that's the thing, it's not that the guidance keeps changing, or the, we can't make up our minds, or that there was false information, right? It's that the disease has changed over time, that's the way, that's what viruses do. Our ability to fight it with respect to, um, learning about it and treat patients better, right? So they're dying less often is, is a testament to learning, because now it's been in practice long enough, right? When this first started and we were formulating our plans for the first school year with this, we didn't have that information, right? We didn't, we didn't have vaccination. What has happened is, you know, with Omicron, it's a, we have a variant that is transmissible, um, far more transmissible, which is why the recommendation is for, you know, a higher grade mask for that very reason.
It's also significantly less of a risk, is that addressed, is that addressed at all?
Run, that wasn't done, yes, Omicron itself is less risky for those who are vaccinated. However, wait a minute, I'm not done, I'm not done. There's a reason all of our.
Folks, folks.
No, he's, he made a point, I should get to respond to it, if he's gonna interrupt me.
You will get a chance to respond, but we need to.
No, hold on, the reason it's important is because your, our hospitals are full, and when you have a stroke or a heart attack, there's no space. That's what's relevant here, and you still have a proportion of the population that is unvaccinated, that is five and below, and we have a lot of parents in the district that have kids of that age, wait, I'm not done, I know you're about to speak. Wait, I'm not done, I know you're about to speak. The other problem is that there are vaccinated people who are immunocompromised, including the elderly. For whatever reason, this is still knocking them out. I'm speaking for them. Is it, is it, do I know for sure that us going masking optional is gonna result in, you know, us being shut down or deaths in the community? No, I don't. I don't. But what I don't understand is when we have known mitigation measures, while none of them are perfect, this isn't the, it wasn't the right time to take it away. Because distancing, we can't do it in order to preserve a better learning environment, right? I want to have it.
Thank you, doctor, sure enough.
You're arguing pertinent...
Ms. Reinert? I'm sorry, you're arguing pertinence to the policy.
Wait a second, can I vote again?
No, you're arguing pertinence to the policy, and she is addressing the recommendations of St. Luke's printed on the cover of the policy, it is pertinent.
I would like to have a motion to accept the revisions to the 2021-22 Health and Safety Plan with the removal of St. Luke's University Health Network on the cover.
I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Demming?
I make a motion to remove that portion of the plan that designates this plan was developed in collaboration with St. Luke's University Health Network and the St. Luke's logo there under. I think it's a fair, I mean, it's an obvious, you know, point, I don't disagree with it.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're motioning for these revisions. Okay, let's go to comments and questions.
I just want to get a clarification. This is a motion to approve the revised Health and Safety Plan with the revisions discussed.
Right, and I was just...
You wanted to address that in the mass comment?
Sure, no, yeah, I was just, my motion was just to edit that portion.
Well, we hadn't, we didn't have a motion yet to accept or adopt the revised Health and Safety Plan.
Okay.
So, I'm asking for the motion to adopt that plan with the revision that we've just discussed, deleting St. Luke's Hospital Network from the cover. So, that's the motion you're making.
The only thing I'd like to add...
Wait, wait, wait a second. Wait, Jeff, you're good with that?
Yes, I...
Nicole's the second, Nicole King. Okay.
Okay, can we, I think I know where you were going with this. Would it be okay with Mr. Demming if we got all the revisions into one motion?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Thank you. All right.
I believe there's gonna be comments which can include additional revision requests, and then we might have to revisit the actual final motion.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
So, I sent the board some verbiage that I would like to be placed under the category of masks. So, when Southern...
Chris, you need to speak into the microphone.
Yes. When Southern Lee High School District is mask optional, face mask may be worn by individual choice only, by anyone on the grounds, by anyone on the grounds or within the authority of the Southern Lee High School District. No personnel or representative of the Southern Lee High School District may, at any time, for any reason, force, coerce, request, or encourage anyone to wear a face mask against that person's expressed or implied will, nor may any personnel or representative of the Southern Lee High School District impose any extra requirement or disallow anyone from participation in any district-related activity for choosing to not wear a face mask.
I assume we're not doing motion in a second, or we're just talking about the language at this point? I don't wanna, okay, so...
We have a motion in a second, we're also looking at revisions.
Right, but right now, we're just...
We can accept the, yeah, motion with those revisions after we discuss.
My, right, my pause was only there to see if, that's clear, thanks. Chris, I have a question for you then with that language. What about the requirement that students mask on buses? That would be a personnel or representative of the Southern Lee High School District?
I think that's a federal, that's a federal regulation, so I don't think that applies...
Correct, but this does not address that. This simply says, no personnel or representative of a Southern Lee High School District may at any time, for any reason. That would include the reason of a mandate, right? For any time and any reason may ask someone to put on a mask.
Says on the grounds.
Uh, so, on the bus, on the ground?
Once the bus begins moving, it's off the grounds, and that's when it's in transportation.
Yeah, and I would say, when we approve the, when we approve the exceptions to say, as we discussed before, we're gonna follow mandates and orders, that I would interpret this in administering it to mean that, yes, we are gonna follow mandates and orders, and that's the extent of it. And beyond that, your exception would apply.
Thank you, yes.
So, you're stating at the beginning, just so I understand, you're saying at the beginning of the document, there will be a statement that says, except as mandates and regulations, we will follow those, and they will basically supersede what is contained in this document if it's a contradiction? Is that what I'm understanding you mean?
At some point, but I'm looking for the language here. We said that we were approving orders and mandates.
Yeah, I believe that was...
Wherever that is written, it supersedes any concerns about coercing. It's not coercion when we follow a mandate and an order.
I think that was, yeah, I remember, I remember that as well, I'm just not seeing it in this current document, which is why I asked. I do remember the same statement, Dr. May.
I would not be concerned that, I would not consider someone asking a student to wear a mask on a school bus in compliance with a federal order as coercion in any way.
No, but it would be a request.
Whether requesting or coercing, or whatever Dr. Wayack has in his language, I would see that separate and distinct from following a mandate or an order.
Can we put that statement in there since we agree that we remember reading it somewhere?
Again, I think that's what it says, the language says.
Right, I just can't find it. So, if we're doing revisions, could we make a revision to add that statement? Because I just, if someone could point it out...
If you look at under transportation, if you look at under transportation, under the federal order issued in January 2021?
Which page are you on?
Specifically addressed in the first stage of the plan.
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Page one.
Under students, under staff?
No, I'm sorry, the first part of the graph, right?
Ah, that's, thank you.
It goes, universal incorrect wearing a mask, which I think addresses a lot of this, and then it specifically calls out transportation in the federal order. So, you know, I think there's a general rule that you would read your matrix so that it wouldn't contradict itself. And so, the fact that you have a transportation in order that makes it clear you're to wear a mask on transportation, I think Dr. Wayack's language is pretty clear that, not to be confused, that somehow that would not permit a bus driver to ask someone to wear a mask, since that's what they're required to do on a bus, on transportation.
And not to mention, it says grounds or within the authority of Southern Lee High School District. If it's a federal thing, it's really not under the authority of the school district at that point. It's a federal regulation.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying that this document, as currently stated, leaves room for interpretation about which takes precedent, school district policy? Because tonight has involved several discussions about what happens when school district policy, or the inclination of the board at the time disagrees with mandates, guidelines, orders? What happens then? And all I'm suggesting is that we put something in here that spells out that hierarchy. Because I don't look at a box on page three and assume that that, without its saying, this supersedes something else. I don't assume that a box on page three, I don't read it that way. And so, this is what I'm trying to avoid. One person reads it one way, another person reads it another way, and then we have to figure out. That's all I'm asking for.
What is the precedent on these sorts of matters? If there's a federal, there's a federal law, so to speak, and then we have in this the authority of the school district, which takes precedent?
The federal law takes precedent. I do believe it's referenced in here, it might not hurt to reference your policy 203. As, when that becomes alive, that will make it very clear that you are following orders. So, if there is an order, a new order comes down, you, it will be followed.
That makes sense. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
And does that also...
Policy 203. So, at this point, any other comments?
Yes, is there another box that addresses the St. Luke's staff? Because I believe masking is required in the training rooms and in close approximation and association with those. Is there something I'm missing about that?
We can comb and eliminate any reference to St. Luke's in the document.
Well, no, but that's a, that's a...
It's part of the, part of the curriculum.
Right, is that...
So, then the question would be whether or not a corporate entity that is working with the school district would in fact have authority over mandatory masking, I guess.
Right, and the issue is, they don't have, a student does not have to wear a mask, but they will not be able to access the service. So, we will not compel a student to wear a mask to receive the therapy, but...
If they want, okay.
If they want the therapy, they have to wear a mask with these outside agencies. Same as with, like, having their ankle taped or something like that in the...
Right, right, that makes a lot of sense. How would that be handled with this, though, saying that the representative or personnel won't request or encourage or explain? How would, how would that person, wouldn't that person...
They're gonna tell them that they can't provide the service to them.
But that would be okay under this? That wouldn't be an explanation or a reason?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
What if, what if there's like an issue or something?
I think at some point, you know, you can, I think it's a little disingenuous to say that this is not understood by our fine educators, our administrators, and the folks in this building. I think at some point...
I totally agree.
I think at some point, you know, I think I'm sure we could look through this document and find ways to say, well, what if this happens, and is that actually covered?
I totally agree.
I think what is clear from what Dr. Wayack's trying to achieve, and I would like to add language to say discourage mask-wearing, and I think the last sentence also, choosing to not wear or wear a mask. I think it should be neutral, because I think the whole point is, we don't want bullying, we don't want people feeling, especially children, right? That they are either being forced to wear a mask or not wear a mask. I certainly don't want to have that happen. For the, my understanding is 70% of the kids in many of the younger ages today wore a mask, and they should feel comfortable doing that. And if they want to wear free masks, they should be, feel comfortable wearing free masks, and I mean that.
Right, I agree.
So, I think that's all he's trying to achieve, and I think at some point, you know, trying to wordsmith it to the point of death, I think it's pretty clear what that particular box would be trying to achieve, which is, I think, important. We also all got emails from teachers that had questions about this too. Well, what happens when, when the parent calls and says, I want you to regulate what's going on with the other kids in the classroom, or this or that? And I think, and I appreciate the administration, and Dr. May, and I think has addressed that through faculty meetings and whatnot over the last week in preparation for this. But I think a good, clear statement such as this, so that everybody's on the same page, that for the most part, this is a decision by the student and the family to do where or not wear, and that you should feel comfortable in that decision, knowing that you're not gonna be looked at one way or the other by teachers, or coaches, or other students about your family's decision about how you are gonna wear or not wear a mask. I think it is appropriate and a helpful thing to have in here. And I think the language he's proposed, if we put a little bit in there, that also makes it neutral, makes it clear that it absolutely protects people's desire to have a mask on, as long as we have that in there. I think, I think that accomplishes what all of us are, nobody on this board, I'm certain, wants to have anybody on either side of this issue, a child feel like he's sitting there, or she's sitting there and feeling uncomfortable because either they're, you know, wanting to be safe or not safe, or whatever they're trying to achieve, right?
I agree, Jeff, which is why I agree, the wordsmithing is problematic, which is why it comes back to why I do not think, it brings us full circle, Dr. May had earlier said, the intent is that this never happens. We have policies about bullying, overarching bullying policies for the school. And your argument just now to me was that you think that this, the wordsmithing I'm proposing is not necessary because that is the intent. But the whole reason that Dr. Wayack introduced this in the first place is an act of wordsmithing. This does not need this statement, because as Dr. May had currently pointed out, this is what we are doing in our buildings and in our classrooms, this is what teachers and professional staff will continue to do, and this is not necessary. It is in and of itself introducing it an act of wordsmithing. So, I am not the introducer of the wordsmithing, I'm suggesting this is problematic, and we should eliminate it. I appreciate that you brought up that it is written from the perspective or the concern, from a biased perspective and concern about, this is written to support a student choosing to not wear a mask. And I think if it is going to be introduced, it should have been, it should have been introduced to serve both sides of that bullying argument, which is also why I do not think this is thought through enough and is an act of wordsmithing, can we just eliminate it entirely? Because this is the intent. The argument is, this is the intent of our teachers and the bullying, so why do we need this? We don't, is my argument.
I was not going to even consider this originally, but in light of some of the evidence that has come to me over time, even including tonight, there were some issues which I won't speak of, and other things that unfortunately, I figured that we wouldn't need a comment like this in our policy, but unfortunately, it seems as if we do.
What you have introduced represents one side, what you have introduced represents one side, one side.
I agree.
The introduction of this is in and of itself is an act of bullying.
Order, folks, order. One person at a time. Please let Mr. Maughan finish his comments. Mr. Demming and Mr. Wayack?
I would say that I agree with Mr. Demick and his approach of making this neutral. That was my original point, but initially, I was sad to think that we needed to have something in here in this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I just want to comment that, no, I do agree with Mr. Demick, and I appreciate you adjusting that to make it neutral. I think that's important.
So, my request in that regard is the language that Dr. Wayack has proposed, following, request, comma, discourage, comma, or encourage. So, discourage would be added at that point for the secretary, and then also choosing to wear, this is the final sentence, at the end of the sentence, choosing to wear or not wear a face mask, I think makes the language neutral, and I think that's important. But the overriding guiding idea behind, I think, Dr. Wayack's point, which is, let's get a broad policy out there for folks to understand that that won't be condoned on other way. I think to Dr., to Mr. Maughan's point, you know, we've heard back from, again, folks in the community that this is a concern, and this is happening. I think it's at a very, very small percentage of folks, but let's go ahead and clarify it for everybody. I think would be, would be helpful, and with that, I don't, if there's no other request for amendments, I call the question.
Why, are you eliminating force, the words, you address the word encourage to be inclusive, Jeff? Encourage or discourage? What about the words force, coerce, request?
Folks, we're going to vote.
Call a question.
I think my, that's my suggestion to make it neutral, I think it does. I don't see any need to make further edits, and I call the question.
I don't have it. Okay, so, what we are voting on, just to be clear, the motion as it has been revised is to adopt the revised Health and Safety Plan, removing St. Luke's Health Network from the cover, and adding the language that Dr. Wayack proposed regarding masking with the edits Mr. Demming included, as recorded by the secretary.
That's correct, and I think it's still my motion, so I adopt what you've, what you've just recorded, and I think it's appropriate to call a question at this point.
There was also a reference to be added to policy 203.
That's true, yes.
Sorry, I forgot that, thank you.
There might actually be one, a reference in there to 203.
Already?
Let's just, let's just take a glance, because it said, policy 203 is what guides our strategy, so let's see.
Contact tracing and combination.
Yes, it's the Southern, Southern Lee High School District utilized its immunization and communicable disease policy for infectious disease strategies.
And that's helpful, because given Ms. Gaiman's concerns about the authority, that's what we just discussed in the 203.
It is in there.
Makes clear mandates and orders are to be followed, so I think that clarifies that.
Hoping that this would be approved, I incorporated it into the plan.
Yep, perfect.
Wonderful. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Could you please read the statement so I, with all the final edits, so I know I'm voting on?
The corrected, the proposed language to be included is, when Southern Lee High School District is mask optional, face mask may be worn by individual choice only, by anyone on the grounds or within the authority of the Southern Lee High School District. No personnel or representative of the Southern Lee High School District may, at any time, for any reason, force, coerce, request, discourage, or encourage anyone to wear a face mask against that person's expressed or implied will, nor may any personnel or representative of the Southern Lee High School District impose any extra requirement or disallow anyone from participation in any district-related activity for choosing to wear or not wear a face mask.
Roll call.
Mary Jo Reinert?
Approved.
Kyle Gangware?
I think it's grossly negligent to approve any health and safety plan that was not made in collaboration with
It's a vote, it's not a time.
In any, in any way.
There's no comment. It's a vote, yes, no.
With any health professionals whatsoever backing it, so no.
Priya Serene? Priya?
Sorry, I can hear all the clapping. My vote is no. I find it interesting that we take into account a few parents that wrote about children and being concerned regarding bullying. However, we're ignoring the parents that are forced into homeschooling or online options.
Emily Gaiman?
No.
Stephen Maud?
Yes. Yes, as I look at our anti-bullying poster in the cafeteria.
Christopher Wayack?
Yes.
William Lysat?
Yes.
Jeffrey Demick?
Yes.
Nicole King?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then, under letter C, we consider a motion to approve the investigatory resolution as contained in the attachment.
Motion. Second. Any discussion, comments?
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead. Do you want to go first?
My only point was for the community that's listening, just so that they're somewhat aware of as to what this regards, the the report completed by the Levin Legal Group regarding the actions of the former superintendent and others. That report has been provided to the board and we've been able to review it. What this resolution would do is allow direct the superintendent to provide notice to persons that may be affected by the report so that they can raise within a reasonable amount of time, respond to it, and provide information regarding it. And otherwise, those parts that can be made public will be done, will be done so. And that, that's what this resolution does. I think it's appropriate. I think it's as transparent as the board can be with the information it has learned. There are still legal concerns that this board can't just willy-nilly disregard. There's a process to allow people that may be affected by this report to register their, their concerns and that those concerns be addressed. And so I think this resolution allows for that and allows to the fullest extent this board to make clear to the community what it believes has been, has happened. And those recommendations that hopefully will allow it not to happen in the future. So I think it's appropriate and I urge the board to support it.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, and Mr. Demick pointed some of this out, this is, this is not a resolution to release the full report. This is a resolution to start a process to possibly release portions of the report and to summarize other portions. And if we proceed with this in this manner, we are guaranteed to accrue additional legal fees. So I'm, I'm conflicted because it is not a full release of the report. It's a process to start a partial release of the report. And we're guaranteed to accrue additional legal fees with this back and forth process with other parties. However, if we just choose to summarize the entire report as opposed to summarizing portions, if we choose to summarize and release and explain to the public the entire report, that spending of legal fees is finite. It's, it's over. And instead of sending those legal fees outside of this community, I'd rather that we'd be able to use those funds directly towards education in our schools. So while I think an explanation and a summary and a release of information is absolutely necessary, I do not think this process of possibly releasing portions of the report and summarizing others is how I would choose to proceed.
I think that's somewhat disingenuous to the community. We have insurance that's going to, that would cover the legal fees. We were told that by our solicitor. It would be my intent to be as transparent as we can and release as much information as possible to the taxpayers who, who paid for this, so.
Right, so in the name of transparency, why, why, Chris, you are agreeing though to not release the entire report. This is a motion to proceed with releasing portions of it, and yet you speak to transparency.
We're releasing, under the law, the, the, what we are able to release. That's what this resolution achieves. In other words, under the law, following the law, we are going to provide the maximum amount of information we can to the community to which they're entitled. And if that incurs a cost to us, it was our poor oversight that caused it. It was their raising this issue. I think they're entitled to know what happened, what the recommendations are. I think that it's important to close a chapter on this by providing that transparency to them. This allows it to the maximum extent of the law, and I think that's what we owe them. I don't, I, we certainly should follow the law. And I don't think we want to get the board, the district into more legal trouble by not doing that, but that's not what this resolution does. This resolution allows us to provide the maximum amount of information under law, and I think it's appropriate. And I think it, it is important. It's an important step to allow those who spent a lot of time, and quite frankly, were the ones to discover this. It wasn't this board, and it wasn't anybody in this district. It was really the, the people out in the community that took the time and, and interest in this particular issue and saw it through. And I think it's important for them to have to know, to the best that we know, what happened and what we're going to do about it going forward.
It is not my understanding that it is against the law to release the full report. I believe this board has the authority to release the entire report to the community. It is the choice of this board to try to mitigate its liability, as you referenced, with insurance. This board could choose to release word for word the entire report. There's a process to do so. This port, what is on this agenda is not suggesting that this board release the entire report, and it is not my understanding, Mr. Demick, that that is as a result of a legal reason why we cannot.
Sure it is. Sure it is. The attorney that drafted the resolution that we paid and have full faith in, Mr. Attorney Levin, has recommended we not take the.
Recommended, oh yes, recommended, yes.
So you recommend the board now just disregard?
No, but you said it's against the law. She's not saying that.
I'm sorry?
No.
Yeah, he's recommending it.
I could intervene for one quick second.
He's recommending, so we don't.
Dr. Serene, if I could for one quick second. I think we begin to tread on challenging ground when we start talking about recommendations that attorneys have made to us. So I think that at this point, we should perhaps say we're doing what we're going to do or not and move forward or not. I say that respectfully to all, but sometimes I have to jump in because I think we were approaching an area there where we perhaps shouldn't.
Okay, we're going to call it. Thank you.
Kyle Gangware? Jeffrey Demick?
Yes.
Stephen Maud?
Yes.
Emily Gaiman?
For the reasons I explained, some summary and some verbatim, my answer is no.
Christopher Wayack?
Yes.
Priya Serene?
No.
William Lysat?
Yes.
Mary Jo Reinhart?
Yes.
Nicole King?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my report, and now to business and finance. Mr. Pepe, you want to handle this?
A board member needs to make the motion, but what we'd like Mr. Pepe to do is just briefly.
Well, even if there's questions, we could request the board to approve the bills. And if anyone has any questions, Mr. Pepe will certainly be.
Okay, why don't we do it that way then? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the bill's list dated January 24th, 2022.
Second.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Pepe? Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And we'll request the board to approve the Lehigh Carbon Community College proposed budget as described and contained in the attachment.
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Does this require a roll call? That was my only question, because it's a budget.
I asked if there were any opposed.
No, no, no. I'm asking if, thank you.
No. We also have a motion to approve the proposed general operating budget for the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit 21.
So moved.
This one, this one does require a roll call. It has a 2% increase in contribution for Southernly High. The motion.
So moved. Second.
Any comments, questions? Okay, roll call.
Christopher Wayack?
Yes.
Jeffrey Demick?
Yes.
Mary Jo Reinhart?
Yes.
Emily Gaiman?
Yes.
Stephen Maud?
Yes.
Kyle Gangware? William Lysat?
Yes.
Nicole King?
Yes.
Priya Serene?
Yes.
And then now we request the board, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, motion carries.
Okay, right, so we request the board to approve a motion for a one-year extension of the current third-party procurement specialist service agreement, the amount of $800 with Curview School Services LLC of Fredericksburg, Maryland.
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sure, and we'll, we'll run through human resources. Mr. Pigeon will be able to answer any questions. But we request the board to approve the substitute teachers and its instructional aides as listed, noting that we are increasing our numbers of people who are available.
And can I add to that? The ancillary activities staff?
You do all of them.
And the athletic event worker, certified employee appointments, and resignation and homebound instructors. So the, all of the, the, the motions included in human resources, A through G.
Right.
So moved. Second.
Any comments, questions for our HR director?
Mr. Pigeon, real quick, you had mentioned that you had about 10 interviews set up, and I know we had a snow day. Have, have those?
We had six people come in.
Okay.
Two people are on the agenda and they are certified. The ones that are not certified have to go through the emergency permit process.
And how, roughly how long is the emergency permit process take?
Not long at all. I mean, there's a training process that will have to look for.
A month, two months, three months?
Two days, five days.
Oh, okay, great. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I think. New business, a student field trip request.
I had an item for new business.
Oh, I don't think we're there yet. I think we have two more items for new business for information. Those are for information only regarding your student field trip request in the conference.
Yeah, new business was before.
Okay, so go ahead.
Just really, we talked about it before. I just wanted to kind of bring it back into the radar, potentially having a student member of the board. I know we talked about it a while back, it seems. But I thought it would be a great opportunity to engage a potential interested high school student in the civics process, in student government, being involved in their community. And I thought maybe we could also utilize that individual to potentially do what we talked about with providing information to the community, summarizing a board meeting potentially, that type of thing. I just wanted to bring it back at least to, since we are starting to focus on other things too now, just for consideration by the administration for future meetings. Yeah, and in the past when we've had students come, we haven't had one sit on the board kind of with us, but at the table. But when we've had them present, I think it's helpful that they have come in pairs. So often we've had two representatives, perhaps an underclassman and an upperclassman. But also just speaking from experience of sitting here at this table, it's kind of nice to have a buddy. So it might be nice for the students to represent an upperclass and an underclass perspective.
I would say it might be something to consider, but I would like to take a poll of our administrators to see in their former school districts if this was in fact done on a regular basis.
In, in my prior experience, we had a senior and a junior. The senior was the primary spokesman, spokesperson, and the junior was the, the understudy, so to speak. And then the, the junior would then rise to be the primary spokesman and they would be replaced. So it's, it's not uncommon, often welcome. And I think they were elected by student council. I think it actually varied over the course of time how they were selected. Some was voted, some were voted on by student council, it was an honor society representative, the administration, so there's a, a whole host of different ways to, to pick.
Would you take a poll of your adminis-
How about if we do this, instead of, you know, spinning it around tonight, get some information on best practices and what's worked in various districts. Come back to you, Dr. Serene.
You persisted, well.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at that and have a presentation on it, okay?
Sure.
All right, great. Any other new business?
Yes, just that we have had a lot of great presentations and I appreciate with increased frequency, what we have seen up on that screen tonight, we heard from Mr. Pepe and Mr. Pigeon last time, Dr. Trinkle. Is there a way that we can get those presentations on the websites, just for board member reference? And also, there've been some wonderful presentations. And I think it's really informative, even for me as a board member, and I'm sure for the community to go back and be able to understand the concepts they're seeing on these agendas.
I, I think they're, they're there on the agenda.
They are.
Are they linked?
So they're linked.
Yeah, they're all there.
They're all linked.
The past, the past ones were linked, but I didn't know, like tonight, I didn't necessarily.
They're linked.
Almost certain they're linked.
They're linked. Is there any other new business?
Yes.
They're, they're currently linked through the agendas.
They're linked.
Okay, but there's not a separate repository for them?
They're linked. Is there any other new business?
Okay.
Okay, with that, we have no public comments? Post-meeting comments? Did you sign up?
There was a sign up, she's up there.
Okay. Doug Durham?
I just want to comment about the report, and then we'll hear that something has been issued. And Mr. Demick was right, that the community deserves to know what happened. And to vote no to the release of that part, I'll attempt, I'll simply because it's not fully transparent when it goes the incompetence of former children that causes the issue is disingenuous at best. To not vote to have this libel is really beyond what I thought this board would have advanced on forward. And just on 203, there was no votes. I am in the middle of that, there's a vote for the entire portion, and there's no vote toward domestic masking. But if the no vote were inherently cause Krista's identity to women and bullying, that would be another just egregious act by members of this board. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.